We'll have four council members plus the water if it will be here.
Three.
There's over here. A three, yes, yes, right here. We are probably not using them. Hey there, how you doing?
Thank you, you're welcome.
Well, wow. Okay, so we're, do you by chance have a long HDMIC work right there, do you? Okay. Gotcha.
Your will a fifth be seated?
Oh, yeah, just, oh, the fifth, you can just leave it on my desk there, I'll go to keep looking at it. I'm not sure where he'll be.
Okay.
It's only six foot. It doesn't, it won't be like a, if they're a male female. Oh, compared to what?
Thank you.
Okay, well, I appreciate it there, thank you so much for looking. Angie, would you mind texting Marilyn and asking her if she's?
Yeah. No, I don't mind.
I'll call Joe Sankar.
Uh, no. No, unfortunately, I'm not. It's coming up shortly, man.
I'm just prepared.
I think it's American show dates.
Is it? Yeah, I think two weeks after.
Yeah, 'cause I've been performing from December 12th for the song.
Yeah, I think that's exactly.
Yeah, we have no time for one of those weekends.
I was only gonna come, I could promise some shows for last week. And he wasn't gonna come out of there.
Yeah. Unless you like the end.
Yeah. Definitely. I'd like to show.
Better places to show than the last day.
Yeah, just getting started.
I'm sure.
How you doing?
Hey.
Hey, how you doing?
Well, well.
Congratulations on your election for both of you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Greg Oris, nice to meet you.
Tim Lyle.
Greg Oris, nice to meet you too.
So I think the presentation you sent me, was it a PowerPoint? Yeah, okay, it was PowerPoint.
There was two links in an email, I can resend it to you.
Uh, oh, no, I just have, no, it's totally fine. Um, yeah, I guess if you do, just want to resend it to you. Did Marilyn respond back, question?
No, she hasn't.
Either Marilyn or Joe are coming up now. How are you?
Pretty good.
Are you finding it there?
It was sex, it was sex. Yeah.
Something like this, I don't even know if that's first actually.
I had done a whole other list, did those, aren't the talks that give a better word? So, when, when, um, the quarter forty, they did not, so they won't sort of, like, can't we give them the half numbers or whatever?
So we have to buy none of their, uh, oh, the couple of payers, would it sell off? We should definitely. It's dark. And we sent the eight words down, so, yeah, we'll try to figure this out.
Okay, yeah, I think we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, welcome. So today is November twenty-seventh, this is the Economic and Community Development Committee. The only item on the agenda today is the potential sale of surplus real estate, currently owned by the City of Norwood. So we've got Andrew Clark and Joe Sankar here, I'm James Bonzel. So today we have two auctioneers, Tim Lyle and Penny Worley. So first, we're gonna kind of hear from them, hear about their company, I'm gonna give them each an equal amount of time, about seven minutes each. After that, we'll kind of, if we have any questions as a committee, we'll, you know, have them both come up and we can ask them and let them each kind of answer the questions. They have a lot more experience than I do when it comes to selling real estate, so it'll be good to have their expertise here. And then hopefully, we can potentially decide, try to decide maybe on a path forward if there's one that kind of sticks out to us, if we need more times, and that's fine as well. And then finally, to maybe even look at some of these properties and try to decide kind of what we want to do with, if there's any specific ones that we want to do anything special with, or do we want to just pretty much put them all up for auction? And then if we do want to put them up for auction, what do, do we want to setting reserves amounts or any other stipulations for any specific properties? So it's a lot of stuff to do, I don't know if we're gonna get to it all, but we'll try to get, kind of, we'll try to keep moving forward with it. So, Tim or Penny, do you all, either one of you have a preference of who goes first, or? Okay, well, I was probably not gonna be able to get the presentation screen up, I won't get it connected, so, your choice. I mean, we can have Tim, if we can have you come first. Yeah.
I assumed that everyone had reviewed the proposal that we sent over, so what I brought is an amended excerpts version of that same proposal. Based on my conversation with James, there was some specifics relative to some of the certain properties that I've addressed in these excerpts. What has changed or been added to the original proposal is in bold and larger font. So I'm just gonna kind of go through those, and then if you have additional questions, I'm happy to answer that. For the record, my name is Tim Lyle, licensed real estate salesperson in the state of Ohio through the Department of Commerce, licensed auctioneer with the Department of Agriculture. Obtained my auctioneer's license in nineteen ninety-seven, my real estate license in nineteen ninety-eight, and have primarily been specializing in the sale of real estate at auction since that time. My auction, or my real estate license is held with a brokerage called Ohio Real Estate Auctions, which is self-explanatory, that is exactly what we do. We have fifty auctioneers licensed under our brokerage around the state of Ohio, specializing strictly in the sale of real estate at auction. So, moving back to the excerpts that I'd mentioned, obviously on the cover page, there are no changes. The, it remains a multiple asset auction, but based on my conversation with James, there's a property or two that price may not be the most important objective, that a certain specified use may be more important, so you wanted to have a bit more control in that arena, being able to make a sell decision based on use, a combination of use and price. So I've included, made it a combination of online only and a sealed bid auction, particularly for those properties that use is more important to the city than, than price. Terms would be a combination of absolute, published minimum bid, and blind reserve. The number one priority in creating a successful auction event is credibility of sale. And what that means is that the buying public or the interested participants who are going to be bidding and perhaps buying these properties are confident that you have a serious intent to sell these properties. The most highest, the highest credibility of sale is an absolute auction, where you're telling the buying public on the scheduled date, at the scheduled time, it will sell absolutely to the highest bidder. I understand that you have some tax circumstances with some of these properties, that's where the minimum bids would come in. And the blind reserve, you may want to place a reserve on a property, but in consultation, we may determine that that may not be an attractive number, and you want to retain the ability to accept a lower price. So we don't put the number out there in any of the marketing materials, the system would place it there as a maximum. If, as we're approaching auction day, we can have further consultation, and you may at that point decide perhaps lower that reserve price a little bit to exact a sale, or continue on, on that same path. That's the process of a blind reserve. The final strategy would be determined in consultation, once you've made the determination, if it is our firm that you select to market these properties, I will come back, we'll sit down, and we'll hash through each of these properties one at a time and determine what is the best approach for each specific property. The auction location, the online only would be on our website at ohio-real estate auctions dot com. We have a, an online bidding platform already embedded, and it's been very successful for us. The next change that you'll see is the date and time, I believe my calendar is, my original calendar is already halfway come and gone, so looking at new dates and kind of having a better understanding of the things that you're going to be determining relative to each of these properties, I set a new timeline of having the online auction end on January thirty-first at two thirty PM with one property closing every fifteen minutes. And the sealed submission deadline on the same date, by the end of business day, we would have those submissions delivered here, so that they're all in one place, and that your local buyers, which is probably who ninety-nine percent of your buyers, bidders and buyers are gonna be, they're gonna be local folks, they can just drop it off if they get behind the mail, if you will. And then at five fifteen, we would open those sealed bids, it would be not a public opening, because again, you're going to maintain that right to make your, your selling decision based on a combination of price and proposed use. The, we would then respond to those submitted sealed bids on the following day, February first. Closings, I did miss the date there, should read honor before February twenty-eighth, it is mentioned later on. There are no additional changes on this page, our commission remains the same, and the marketing costs for the properties remain the same. Relative to the terms page, the next page, the first change you'll see there is again, the closings will be held honor before February twenty-eighth. The bottom, the last item on that page, seller shall retain the right to base their acceptance of the sealed bid offers based on a combination of factors, including, but not limited to, price and proposed use. The next page is sort of an adapted schedule based on the meeting tonight, assuming that you can come to a decision by Friday, which is December first, we would execute contracts honor before that date. December first to the twenty-second, we would have scheduled our committee and the auctioneer strategy consultation meetings. We would complete our due diligence process on each of the individual properties, gathering as much information as we can for marketing purpose. December twenty-second would be the deadline that we would agree on, that we would have final decision on how we're going to approach each individual property. Everything else kind of remains the same, other than adding the submit bid, sealed bid submission and opening on January thirty-first, and the sealed bid response on February first. The next, the remainder is just the contract that I had sent over before, with the amendments pertaining to the sealed bid and the terms being determined on a case-by-case basis in consultation with the committee and, and myself. So those are, I really just, I didn't want to take up a lot of time, I wanted to mainly highlight the items that would be different based on further conversations that we've had to our original planned approach.
Great, excellent, so I definitely appreciate it, and then we'll, after we hear from Penny, then I'll have you both come up and we'll ask some specific questions, so. Yeah, Penny, if you don't mind, and I just want to apologize to Penny, because Penny has emailed me asking if we were gonna be able to use the computer, our, our big screen TV today, and so unfortunately, the cords that we have don't, you know, fit quite into Penny's computer, should have worked on that, but, so she's gonna be kind of, you know, she doesn't have a handout for us, but that's really my fault, because I, she thought that we were gonna have that, so.
I'm completely off guard and on a fly. So I'm Penny Worley, I own Worley Auctioneers, I've been a local auction here, here in greater Cincinnati for more than twenty-three years. I'm a licensed Realtor, licensed auctioneer, pioneer of online auctions. I have over thirty thousand bidders in my online bidder base, I'm also a member of the Cincinnati Board of Realtors, and a member of RIA, which is the Cincinnati Real Estate Investment Association here in the southern part of the state. So I'm very well-connected in selling properties like this, have been selling real estate at auction for more than twenty years, and I'm currently under contract with the FDIC and have been since two thousand and seven, have sold over forty-five million in assets for them at online auction in thirty-three states, including Puerto Rico. Similarly to this portfolio that you have, last year I sold a portfolio of thirteen properties here in Cincinnati for frishes, when their accountant had embezzled like four million dollars, so if you're familiar with that case, it would be similar like in value and in quantity. My recommended method would be to sell the property at absolute auction, with the exception of maybe anything that you would want to do sealed bid. I would recommend that you would sell those properties with reserve, when you sell with reserve, you have twenty-four hour, you have twenty-four hours to accept, reject, or counter any of those offers. With a sealed bid, you'll be opening them based on value, not maybe consideration for who you'd like to have the property. With the reserve, you would have that choice, accepting the offer and seeing who the bidder is, based on their name, and maybe we've had pre-qualification questions, know a little bit more about them. We would do, if we have the ability, I know most of this is vacant land, but we'd have the ability to do open houses. We'd like to conduct at least one for a two-hour window of time, giving any investors and users time to go through the properties if we had keys. We would have a sign on each of the properties, and I have to cheat now, look at my PowerPoint to see if I can line out the budget and everything that I have for you guys. I know I sent a couple of you the proposal. In my proposal, I also have many case studies of similar properties, so that you can see results. Basically, I've got a budget here, and also a method of payment, so you would not be paying commission. Myself and my staff or any buyer's agents that would participate in the auction would be paid by the buyer's premium. So I have an example on my PowerPoint that shows you a property that brought fifteen thousand, which means the buyer would be paying fifteen hundred dollars above and beyond the buyer's premium, so you would net the actual bid price. And that's a really good way to get past price points and pay the auctioneer Realtor or any participating buyer's agents. We pay the buyer's agents out of the buyer's premium, so there's no additional cost to the city for that. It's a really good tool as auctioneers that we're able to use. And we do email all agents that would be in the zip code of the properties, because we want to encourage spirited bidding, especially when you're going absolute. And generally, the rule of thumb is if the property is less than a hundred thousand dollars, it really should be sold at absolute, because to attract the proper buyers, they want to know they're gonna win. If they know they're gonna win, they're gonna participate, they're gonna invest their time, and they're gonna have more spirited bidding, and it's proven that absolute brings more money than reserve. Typically, we, we save reserve method for higher value items, higher value properties or single-ticket items. But I do believe if you have specific properties that you have more concerns with, then we could definitely entertain the reserve method. Our auction plan is, and always, is thirty-day timeframe, so I didn't have specific dates, but from the time that you set forth signing the contract, we can turn these properties around in thirty days. And so basically, once you give us the green light, sign the contract, and select the auctioneer, then we will set forth the marketing plan, and I'll go over the budget real quick. And we start marketing immediately, upload those properties on our website, and open the bidding immediately. So our bidders will have thirty days to bid on the properties, which gives them time to find it through search engine optimization, email blast to the RIA group and other agents, and prospective buyers within our bidder base. And then the closing would be required within thirty days after the bidding closes, so in sixty days, your process would be completed. And we would oversee each and every one of those closings, they would be buying them as-is. The biggest thing that you, you have as a seller doing the auction method is there are no contingencies in the contract, not contingent for inspection, not contingent on financing, so the buyer is buying everything as-is, they must close, and we get at least twenty percent down on the absolute properties. It's enough money to lock them in and get them to closing and qualify, that they're able to buy, and they would deposit that and go through a process on our website to register to be able to even bid. Marketing, I do have a marketing budget here of thirty-five hundred, and I'll do this really quick, let me know if I'm running out of time.
You're fine, I'll get the marketing budget from them too.
Okay, so with, with the marketing budget, that includes, if we're going with the fourteen properties, fourteen eighteen by twenty-four signs placed on each property, it's really huge, because signs speak volume. Action, auction means action, and it really moves the market, so signs are very important. Also, we're designing a webpage for you, for your event on our website with SEO and graphics. We have online bidding platform that's covered in that fee as well, we get paid by, or we pay our provider by clicks, we get to see how much interest is there. We do a four-week email blast to our client list, so every week, we're gonna be sending out email blasts to our over thirty thousand bidders. We're also going to email blast to all the agents in greater Cincinnati, and also to the RIA, the Real Estate Investment Association, that's really big for the type of properties that you have. I believe a lot of those people will be bidding on these properties. There's also a tool called My, My State MLS, we can reach other search engines, LandWatch, Zillow, Facebook, social media, and then a print ad in the Business Courier, and that's how we arrive to the total budget. This is flexible, if you decide you want to cut some of it, we can definitely visit that. But auctions work, they're the way to go, I hope I didn't go over my time.
Great, yeah, thank you so much, really appreciate that. Do we, do we want to go ahead and have Tim come back up, and so we can ask some questions together, or?
You both come back up.
Yeah, 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 we'll have, actually, we'll have, yeah, we'll have you all just here together, so. Yeah, 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 we'll have, yeah, we'll have you all just here together, so. And I'll try to give you all an equal amount of time for the questions that we have. Did you have any questions you want to start out with?
Well, a couple of things. One, like, just starting off, I mean, look at some of these properties, and there's a lot of tax due on some. So would we set like the minimum starting bid, I guess for lack of a better term, at whatever, at least what the tax implications are to the city first, and then hopefully it goes from there? Or, because I mean, if we're on the hook for, say, $3,900 on, on one particular property, would we set the minimum bid for that property at $4,000? Or do you set the minimum bid for what you think that particular piece of property is worth?
That really goes back to what I mentioned right off the bat about credibility of sale. If you, if we start making determinations in our minds of what a property may or may not be worth, that's taking that leverage and that ability from the buying public to determine what they believe it's worth. So if, and you're looking at the properties relative to the, the tax implication that you have on each individual property, if minimum bids are going to be incorporated, I would absolutely set them as low as you possibly can so that the city does not incur any additional expense in disposing of these properties, but also not discouraging prospective buyers from participating in the auction because the minimums may be too high.
Could I ask, if you know what the total tax amount is?
On each one, I do, but I guess the...
Just a kind of a nab, like a round, like a, just a loose number that I can...
Oh, it varies. One, there's like almost $22,000.
Is it over 100,000?
I think it's 150, around 100,000.
On all of them, total for everything.
Okay.
But let me ask a real quick question to the law director. If, say, we sell one of these things and it sells for, you know, $3,500, but we owe $3,900 in taxes, are we on the hook for the balance of that tax before that lien will be released?
Please do, yes.
Before the lien would be released in order for us to market the property?
Let me, I'm Keith Moore. It's nice to meet you. I'm the one that asked you about this crazy idea of what do we do with these? And let me ask you, that's one of the, one of the issues we have, is that I'm assuming before we close, whatever, liens have to be resolved one way or another.
Absolutely.
So that's one of the difficulties of doing an absolute, or anything like an absolute, is we would have, I'm assuming, you would not want to auction these off unless we're already writing checks for those back amounts. So my question to you would be, is there a way to sell to do what you do, just subject to all liens and taxes of record, so that they buy the property as-is and that debt transfers with it?
Yes, but here's what I'm going to give you by experience, being, being in the Cincinnati market for 20-some years, I don't believe a minimum bid auction will work here. It will work in some areas that are more depressed, but I don't believe it will work. I think the better solution would be to take the liability and then look at the assets and to see if we think we're going to break even. I think you will. The question would be, would you want to come to, to the closing with five or 10 or $20,000? Because I don't think you're going to get a buyer otherwise. If, if it's $3,000, yes. If it's $30,000, no. In order to get these investors to bid on these properties, it really needs to be absolute. They will buy, they will spend money, but when we have to, we tell them where to start, they won't even bid. I start everything on my website at a dollar. It doesn't matter if it's worth half a million or 50,000. And I've sold millions and millions and millions. And I believe, and I've done it all over the country, but in our area, and, you know, being from this area for so long, I know that like in Toledo, for instance, there's two sisters, and one sister does everything minimum bid and the other sister does everything absolute. Here, I don't know what your experience is, Tim, but I don't really think a $50,000 property is going to sell to a good price if we tell them where to bid and for how much. It's better to have a reserve and see where we end up because you can accept, reject, or counter at that point with a reserve. But if we choose to sell it absolute, we need to let it go. Out of looking at the portfolio, I do think that you're going to be able to clear, and then from there, it's, you know, where are you going to be, you know, in the profit zone after that? Obviously, if you want guarantees, then the minimum bid or the reserve is the way to go. I just don't think you're going to get enough money to be in a win-win situation doing it that way. I mean, people will bid, but they'll be more reserved in bidding.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't asking the question necessarily to see that we're going to, you know, make some huge windfall.
Right.
You know, but, but my point is, I don't want to be in a position where we go absolute and everybody bids a dollar, you know, at the starting bid and says that's all, all these are worth.
Yeah.
And we're left holding the bag on a hundred and something thousand dollars in tax liability that we can't afford to pay.
And they won't, they won't, but go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Penny wholeheartedly that absolute is the most powerful word in our industry. You know, you know exactly what that means. You know, on that day, on that time, if you're the last bidder, you're going to be the owner of it. And you can watch the car auctions on television and you can see the frenzy when that reserve is lifted or it's, an item is selling absolute. What the real key question here is what does the city of Norwood need to accomplish? And if that is not cutting a check, then I don't think you can risk a across-the-board absolute auction. In our, in my proposal, I've suggested that we sit down and take a week's time and, and let me do inspections on these properties. Then let's sit down, let's look at what the tax liability is on a certain property. If you've got a property that is legitimately in the market worth $50,000, but you have a $3,600 tax liability, A, I would feel pretty safe going in that absolute direction with that, but I would also feel pretty safe with saying, the bidding's going to start at 3,700 bucks. So you know, worst-case scenario, if somebody hits the button and it's, it opens at that number and closes that number, it's, there's still not a dollar coming out of the city's coffers. And, and I understand that concern. Everybody has, you know, you have to be fiscally responsible. Your, you know, your community is going to be asking, why are you doing this? Why are you doing it this way? And I want to be able to help provide you with the answers when those questions come. So I'm not going to sit here tonight and say, it all has to be absolute or you're not going to be successful. I'm, I'm, I think it's imperative that we take our time and determine on a per-case basis what the right approach is. I don't think this is a one-size-fits-all package of assets.
Can I just, I just want to, oh, let me start with this. Have either one of you done auctions, online auctions for government entities selling properties?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Because the idea of the absolute auction, under the code, we can't do an absolute. The service director has the discretion to reject any bid. So it can't be a guaranteed absolute, that's just the way the code reads. So that was one of the reasons, I wanted just to get a sense of, do governments use this, this approach? It seems like a much more savvy and effective approach as far as getting bidders for properties. And so I just wanted to start with that.
Yeah, I mean, in my experience, I've, I've worked for the United States Department of Justice. I do some foreclosure work for the United States Department of Agriculture. When you get into the foreclosure aspect, there are laws in the Ohio Revised Code. A property has to be appraised, minimum bid is set at 2/3 of that. However, there is a new law that went into effect in November of last year relative, again, and this is, sort of applies, but does, and I'm just kind of trying to give you an overview of the governmental aspect of these sales. The new law states that if an auction is held at a physical location in the county where the subject property is and does not sell at that minimum bid, somewhere between seven and 30 days later, there is what's called a provisional sale date where the property will sell, subject to no minimum bid. Still has to go back to the court and be confirmed, but if all of the paperwork leading up to that foreclosure was done properly, there's no reason for a judge or magistrate not to confirm that sale. So I offer that in terms of, you know, an approach that certain government aspects always apply. In a state circumstances, if someone passes away intestate, there are no errors. Property, again, has to be appraised and the minimum bid set at 2/3 of that figure. So there's a formula that's out there, but that formula's not going to work for you here because I, even taking 2/3 of an, first of all, you're going to waste money getting appraisals when you don't need them. And then you set minimum bids at 2/3 of those figures, what if those numbers are still too high and you were still in an okay position if you set your minimum bids lower? Again, going back to the credibility of sale, if you do not have a tax liability or a cost liability, set the bid at, as, as Penny says on her website, a dollar, and, and let them go from there. If you have a $3,600 tax liability, set it at $3,700. If it doesn't bring that $3,700, now you know you don't have an asset any longer. It's a liability.
Keith, could you provide, or, you know, Mr. Moore, could you provide information on this, what you're referring to with not being able to do the absolute bid? Like, so when you say the code, what, to get some information about what you were talking about?
Okay, the default provision for a city selling property is you have to have competitive bidding. You cannot, there's, there's an interesting case from 1922. The city of Cincinnati auctioned off some property, actually, they hired an auctioneer to, to handle an auction, and they auctioned off this property. They didn't have a charter yet, and in, and the, they were going to pay the, I think it was pay the auctioneer like $238. They auctioned it off, they get, the high bid was $100. He sold the property for $100, the auctioneer did, and then he sent his bill in for $238, and the city auditor refused to pay it. Said, you can't do that. It's the mayor and the safety server, whoever's the official in charge of the property. They can't delegate that, that opportunity. And the Ohio Supreme Court said, you're right. You can't pay the auctioneer for doing that. So if the, if the city delegates too much of its authority to a private party, then it's invalid. And so, but you can hire, you know, and then there's very little case law, but there's a little bit that are along the lines of a mayor hired an outside accounting firm to do some numbers in order to present a budget. And the challenge was, you can't hire him, you can't hire somebody else to do it, it's your job. And, no, you can hire somebody to do it, you just can't defer all of your authority. So we can allow, we can hire an auctioneer to do some of it, but we have the final decision on whether or not, and it's specifically in the section of the code dealing with selling government property, municipal property, is you have the auction and, you know, the theory is you have it just like when we do a salt, you know, we do bids for salt. It's sealed bids are due and council chambers will be open at noon on Friday. And that's the traditional way to do it. But at that point, for your selling property, the service director is the officer that will be in response, would be in charge of the properties of the city, still retains the right to reject a bid for, you can just decide to do that. That's within his authority. So we can't have, it's absolute, you're guaranteed if you're the highest, you're definitely going to get it. But, you know, with that kind of caveat, I mean, there's, there are just some mechanics, some hoops to jump through.
My request would be that before executing a contract between our firm and the city of Norwood, that we have a, a meeting with the, the service director, if he's the person who's going to be in charge, and approve these published minimum bids before we go so that we know if we state in our marketing and on our website that if a minimum bid is $3,600 and somebody bids $3,600, that the service director's not going to say, no, that really wasn't the minimum bid. That goes to credibility of our, our businesses and our industry. So we need to make sure that everybody's on board. And perhaps using the term absolute is, is not something that, that the city can do.
Yeah. I never use the word absolute anyways, even if I am selling absolute, because the way the law states, you know, if anything happens, then you have no out. But the first question that people are going to ask is, are there any liens? So the real, the real thing here is probably what method works best. In my opinion, it would not be a minimum bid. In this situation, if it's not absolute, it would be reserve. And that goes back to you reserve the right to, to accept the offers or not, giving you 24 hours to accept, reject, or counter. Then you could look at the whole portfolio to see where you are and how you would, because, you know, some properties obviously, and based on the ones that I've seen, are going to more than make up for some of the others. Some of the others are just going to be, they're just going to be bad. And so I do believe you have some properties that are worthy of taking care of the other ones. And maybe if you're looking at all of the prices as a whole to see where you're at, you, you'll have time. If you need 48 hours, we can make it 48, but I probably wouldn't go much beyond that. So we capture the enthusiasm to get people locked in. But as soon as the auction's over and you accept the bids, then we collect funds, deposit those in escrow. That way, we make sure we get them to closing. Because the last thing we want is for somebody to walk because we haven't moved fast enough.
Right, but I mean, just, just for both of you, an absolute condition of, of doing this would be that the city has to be able to pay off the liens...
Right.
...by closing. There is no other way to do it?
Yes.
So they could, the funds could come from closing?
That...
If I have a mortgage, if I have a mortgage and Penny sells that property for me, I don't stroke a check to pay off that mortgage balance, or if I have a tax bill, I don't cut a check. The, the title company who's handling those closings gathers all the funds, and before they will agree to close it, because they're going to put, they're going to offer title insurance, before they do that, they, they will specify that all of those liens are paid out and taken care of. So no deed would be presented until the lien was cleared and those funds were paid off.
Okay, I see what you're saying, is that there would be a check paid to, and we'll have to check with the auditor and the treasurer, because just the way municipal finances work, because it wouldn't be a check if it's not a check written by the city, that might actually work. If it's a check written to the treasurer, it's not written by the city, that might actually work. Because any check written by the city has got to be, right now, has got to be taken account of in the fiscal emergency plan. It has to be taken account in the city's budget, the current appropriations that have been passed, there has to be requisition submitted, and then a purchase order issued before a check can clear. It's a complicated process.
Yeah, I think that could be avoided.
So if that can be done, then that is actually, okay.
Well, the buyer has to wire funds now. There are no checks that actually happen, so the, the title companies here in Cincinnati require that the money is wired in prior to closing. So perhaps we look at the portfolio and say, these three properties are going to bail out 10 properties. That's pretty easy to take, the three best properties, figure it out, close them first. That way, you have the majority of your proceeds and to take care of the rest because the money will be wired in by each buyer. And they'll also be holding their, their escrow monies as well, their deposits.
And I think Penny and I are saying basically the same thing, that you're going to have, you're going to have some dollars over in, in Peter's basket to slide over to Paul's basket, if you want, these assets. My recommendation's a little bit different. Let's set the minimums covering what the, what your exposure is. If it doesn't sell at that point, let's close on the transactions that did sell, let's have, and then let's look at how many dollars are left in that pot, and then approach whatever properties remain, knowing that we still have these dollars that we garnered from those other assets. And maybe market, remarket those properties for three weeks with significantly reduced bids.
Okay, let me just toss this out for the community, just, just so you, our perspective is, the city owns all these properties, and most of them, we have no, we don't really have any way to do anything with. Because there are back taxes owed, we can't file for tax exemptions. For every six months, we owe more. And so we've been paying that. It's a long convoluted history, that's as far as I'll go into it. So right now, the city's goal is get these off the books, maybe generate some income. So I think the big question is, if we're, you know, I think that there's a possibility if we do the, you know, time the closings in the right order, we can look into exposure of $150,000. And that's, that's kind of the balance the committee, council, the administration need to decide in order to prevent another, I don't know, $30,000 from accruing every six months, or whatever that number is. We're very likely to, to bring in at least 150 or whatever is outstanding, and so we'll probably, that, that should at the very least balance us out and stop the losses and may actually generate. The question is, you know, just specifically working on the timing, but I think that that, you know, as far as the administration and committee and council goes, they need to, you know, that that's kind of the perspective in which we're operating, and it sounds like it might be doing well.
And so, just a quick thing for Joe and Andrew, are we okay with, and Keith, too, I mean, is the city okay with losing, potentially losing money, if you will, you know, getting less than the taxes are due on a couple of these properties if overall the entire portfolio, you know, balances out, like, or are we wanting to say that we, we need to pay on each property, we have to make sure we get... we have to make sure we get, pay out that?
Are you asking me personally? My personal opinion is, if we walk away owing, at the end of this, owing $30,000 that we have to come up with somewhere, but all of these go away and are no longer on the books and are no longer, you know, racking up more debt and the three houses deteriorating further and Public Works doesn't have to cut the grass anymore, I consider that a win, personally. That's my perspective. But I'm the one that's had to go through two banker's boxes full of documents just to figure out what we owe and what we own and what we owe.
I wanna go back to one point that Penny made.
But on the other hand, though, I don't know paperwork wise, if you say you owe 3,700 on one or whatever, and it brings in 5,400, so you, you made a little bit on that one. The other one, you owe 5,200 and you only brought in 2,500. How, I guess that's one thing we'd have to work out, but I don't, paperwork wise, how we would cut a PO or whatever to say, "Okay, where are we gonna get the other $2,500 to pay this one down?" When we, we're not guaranteed we're gonna, even though you say if we're, we come 30,000 short, in the long run, over the next couple of years, we're probably a little further ahead, we're not paying the taxes, we're not paying the upkeep. But, short term, how do we make the payments? Or how do we just, well, I guess that's something we'd have to work on down the road, how we try to get rid of the dang on things, get the payment made on what we owe cleared with every committee we have to go through now.
I will toss this as a potential cushion, is that my, I believe that the, what I think's going on is the auditor's been paying the current assessments every six months. And so if we put into the projections that we may make whatever December 30th or December 1st as a payment, I'm assuming that one's going out. If, within the budgetary process, we basically erase the June payment of next year, but we, you know, make that, we appropriate whatever that dollar amount is, right? It's in the key. And we could say that the June and the December 1st payments are not actually, if we use, say, "Oh, we're gonna use those appropriations in order to make whatever we need to, to offset these in the first part of 2018 as we go through the closings," that may be one way to kind of work those numbers and actually get checks out within the cash flow situation. Just a thought.
Have you had title searchers run on these properties? Are taxes the only liens that, are you certain that taxes are the only liens that exist on these properties?
There are also some court costs. The vast majority, there's a few that were just quit claim to the city from owners when the properties were demolished. The majority of them came from tax foreclosure sales. And so we have a court order that transferred title to the city.
If they came through a tax foreclosure sale, that cleared all other liens. That answers my question. Okay. But, and first of all, I wanna say Penny and I have been friends for a long, a long time. And you cannot go wrong by hiring either of the companies you have sitting here tonight. You will have a fine auctioneer working for you regardless of what your, what decision you make.
I agree.
But I do wanna take some difference with the point that she made relative to a reserve auction versus a minimum bid auction. In my experience, I've found that the more straightforward you are with the buying public and telling them that it's going to take this to buy it. If that number is attractive, for example, in the foreclosure world, when an appraisal comes in and it is probably, in my mind, probably about what the property's worth, then you set the bids at two thirds of that. Anybody who has any interest in buying that asset would be dumb not to buy it at two thirds of its actual value. So if the minimum bids are attractive, the market will move to them just as effectively as they will an absolute auction. Because if you've got something that's worth $20,000, you have a minimum bid of 3,600, it's a no-brainer. Somebody's gonna bid 3,600, somebody's gonna bid 37, 38, 39, 4,000, 5,000, 6,000, it's gonna stop somewhere. But you, you know, if you set that minimum bid at exactly what your exposure is, if somebody bids that number, that one's gone, that one's taken care of. At the end of the process, if we have two or three lesser desirable assets remaining, you've got hopefully a, some money in hand from the excesses on the other properties, now the city can decide, "Okay, let's just pay that $3,600 tax bill. Now there is no tax lien on the property, you can start the bidding at a dollar." And with a secondary follow-up process, without risk or additional further exposure, you can, I believe with a two-step process, eliminate this entire portfolio.
With a reserve versus an absolute, do you tend to draw as many interested parties with reserve? Or typically, an absolute gets 10 times more people?
It is a downgrade. Absolute is at the top of the model. You'll have, just for simple numbers, if you have an absolute auction, you may have 20 registered bidders. If you have a published minimum bid that is attractive, that may drop to 15 registered bidders. With reserve, it may be 10. Because again, it goes back to the credibility of sale. When I say that there's no number, we're not gonna tell you what we're gonna sell it at, we're not gonna put, we're not gonna give you that information, we're simply going to reserve the right to accept or reject or counter your final bid, I as a buyer am skeptical of that. I don't, they're not really serious about selling these assets. They're fishing. They just wanna get somebody in a conversation about the asset. And it, it's the lowest level of credibility of sale, particularly with this type of asset.
I disagree in that if it's a hot property and you don't have a lot of them, it doesn't matter, you know? I just know that the more people that bid, the higher the price. And he's right, if it's absolute, you're gonna get more people to bid. So for the turds, you know, I don't really think it matters what method you go with. You can't wave a magic wand. So there are gonna be some discrepancies in what you need and what it's gonna bring. I do think with the reserve, you haven't really set a ceiling or a floor. The market will decide and find its way. And the magical part of the auction is, sometimes it really, really soars, a lot of times. So I'm not always a favor of telling people where to start in this town, but I think in a lot of other towns, it works just fine.
On, pardon me?
Yeah, please, please.
On the reserve, we wouldn't necessarily set a minimum on the reserve. But to be like an absolute, except we reserve the right to, you know, yank your name.
No one knows what you want or what it's gonna take. So they're investing their time. In the hot, in the hot properties, and there's a few, this will give us the ability not to put a number out there, because I do believe that once you set a minimum starting bid, it really does set a ceiling. And, you know, my fear would be that it wouldn't go much beyond that. Not, in, not potentially what it could be, if it's a hidden number, nobody knows. Because typically, my business model, and every auctioneer's different, it's either absolute or reserve. I've just had enough experience with the minimum starting bid that we don't have a portfolio of great properties. So that's my fear, that it, it's not gonna work for us in this case, in, in some of the properties that we need to rise above that.
I had a property, two weeks ago in Koshockton County, Ohio, I had a, an appraisal of 75, this is a foreclosure, I had an appraisal of $75,000. Setting the minimum bid at two thirds, we had a minimum bid of $50,000. We went to auction, it opened at 50,000 and sold for $89,000. That model can work if the minimums are attractive.
Well, it was probably more desirable than some of the ones we have.
And I would say, we set it two thirds, so it's a process where somebody knows that it's being set at two thirds as a minimum. And the thing is, we don't have appraisals that I would put a lot of confidence in and we don't wanna pay to get appraised.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think, I don't think the circumstance you have calls for appraisals or matters. If you're, if you have a nut of $3,700 to bust, that's your minimum. You can't sell it for less than that.
I guess, did you have something?
No, you're fine.
Guess what I was, I'm thinking if you went reserve and really didn't have a minimum, kind of like an absolute reserve, but...
Those words do not mix at all, especially in our licensing law.
But I guess, but the thing is, when we market the properties or when you send out, this is what's available, you know, would the taxes due be part of that?
In my due diligence, in my due diligence package, it would.
Okay, I thought I, because that way, people know that, for Christ's sake, there's, you know, $2,500 in taxes due here, so I guess if I'm gonna be doing a, a reserve, you know, they're not gonna take anything less than that, potentially.
So why hide it?
Yeah. But if on the absolute, there's a $2,500 tax lien, they might say, "It's absolute, hey, you know, I'll bid 500 bucks," or whatever it might be.
As soon as the word, and this is our licensure, we, we have very specific guidelines outlined in the Ohio revised code and policed by the Ohio Department of Agriculture. If we use the term absolute, there can be no, and the auction commences, there can be absolutely no, whatever the last bid is, it sells to that bidder and the property must transfer to that owner. That, that is the pure definition of absolute. I just saw an ad today, absolute beyond $96,000. That's illegal. And, and if that were in the state of Ohio and the Department of Agriculture, Department of Agriculture saw it, and they do, they see it every time, they would take our license, they would fine us and set us on the bench for a period of time and send us back to school, probably. So it's, we're very protective of the language and the language that we use. But, you know, we're, I don't even really think we're talking about absolute versus reserve anymore. We're talking about publishing the minimum bid, telling the public exactly what you have to get out of it, or it's not going to sell, versus, "Well, let's see where it gets and maybe we'll sell it, maybe we won't." That, if we were talking about a million dollar property, or we didn't know, it could be worth somewhere between 1 million and 5 million, depending on who the participants are, that approach makes sense. Let the buying public, you know. But you've got a problem to solve. And the problem to solve is not owning these properties. Again, I'm not using the term assets, because they're not. They're liabilities for you now. There's gonna be another tax bill in January, there's gonna be another one in June. And, and if, if you can get, you know, in a perfect, my goal would be the same as yours, to get as many dollars for each of these properties as possible and everybody makes some money. But if at the end of the process, you don't own any of them and you didn't stroke a check for anything, that's a, that's a win. I, I frame it as, "I may not get you to Disneyland, but I can get you to King's Island."
So, my, my question, I guess, so I guess the question's here for, you know, Keith or for you all, so can we use, let's just say that we do just go absolute on all of them? I mean, we really need to get these off, I mean, our books. I'm not saying that we can't, but let's just say if we did, and then tell me why we can't, but if we did, could we use tax money from, like, could we structure the closings or put them in an order where if one is, gives us more money than that taxes due, could we use the leftovers of that to pay another property tax bill from the title company, like, pay another property tax bill that, that bid that came in was lower than the taxes that were owed? Like, the only thing is, if it comes back to the city, you know, if the money does come back to the city, there's all those processes that Keith said, so we wouldn't be able to guarantee that tax bill paid, would we, for the properties that?
We, I mean, we have the bid, the closing's in 30 days. If it's, if the amount that we have to pay on the lien, on the, the old, you know, the excess taxes, if the city's gotta write a check for it, if there's enough in the appropriations and the appropriations would have to be compliant with the fiscal emergency, the fiscal recovery plan, and there's enough cash on hand, then yes, the city can write checks.
But we can't, but you mentioned that law, though, so we, but we can't necessarily do an absolute bid for that reason, or?
I think, I'm thinking, just to get some, I'm thinking of the remedies here, because the remedies and the ones before is that the auctioneers don't get paid, or the accountant didn't, was that the accountant wasn't gonna get paid. Whether having the buyer pay them upfront instead of money coming to us affects that, I don't really know. Whether there's a challenge to the validity of the sale itself on that basis, I don't really know. I don't, I'm not really prepared to take that chance. And I think we're probably better off saying that it's not, it can't be an absolute. If it's an absolute, then the mayor and the service director have delegated their home rule statutory authority to a private party and that's something they can't do. Just like council can't say, "I'm gonna turn it over to them to write the ordinance," or to, you know, to, to set whatever the budget's gonna be. You can't do that. It's, it's beyond the scope of your authority.
And so if, with a minimum bid, would that suffice? So like, let's just say that the safety service director approved, you know, a list of minimum bids, would that suffice what you're referring to?
Depends on what the terms are from their perspective on what minimum bid means. Does that mean if the minimum bid is $10,000 and somebody bids 15, they're absolutely guaranteed to get that property if they can write the check? And that's the thing, it's gotta be, there has to be somewhere in there, that it has, there has to be a recognition that the city does not have to accept any bid. We cannot be required, we can't turn over our authority. And to be honest, I don't even know if then it needs to come back to council to do an ordinance for the sale, it might. But I, you know, all I can suggest is that we, it has to be clear that that's part of the, the process, whether the bid package can include a letter from the service director that says, "I am not going to reject any bids that are over this month, I'm not gonna reject any of the bids that come in." You know, I don't, I don't know if that's gonna make a difference in the bid package or not, but it's something that could be included. I just, I, I'm uncomfortable with the idea of doing an absolute when we don't have the authority to do, to, to auction stuff off on an absolute basis.
Well, you know what?
And I wanna give, like, just, I wanna give you all the time to answer that, but just follow up, are there, can you give us any other municipalities, like, actual, you know, municipalities that you all have auctioned property off for and kind of give us how that process looked? And it's okay, I mean, if you haven't done a municipality, it's, it's fine.
The city of Covington? I auctioned.
That's not gonna help us.
I sold property for a school district in Logan County, Ohio, Riverside local schools. That falls under a municipality. They have a board, they had their rules and regulations. What they did, they gave the superintendent, as a board, they gave the superintendent the authority to enter a contract with me. And the superintendent attended the auction and they had approved minimum bids and the, once we were past the minimum bids, we had authority to sell.
And I was hoping to use school districts as an example, but they have a whole separate sections of the code that govern how you sell school property, and there's just been a lot more interest in it. There's been a lot more litigation. I mean, what I'm working from is really old cases that if it actually went to court or the Ohio Supreme Court, I think it would be, I would be shocked if the court said, "Well, no, a city can't outsource that." You know what I mean? That there's, that back then, there was a policy of outs, against outsourcing, and clearly that's not the case today. But I don't wanna get stuck in litigation about it. I don't want a sale to be jeopardized because of it. I don't want somebody to file a taxpayer suit that say, "No, you can't pay the auctioneers, they need to write, you know, refund that money to the city." I mean, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna have any of those kinds of...
Here's what I can assure you, if you advertise an absolute auction and someone places a bid and you do not sell that property to that buyer, you will have litigation.
Right. And absolutely, I understand that. I, that's not, that, yeah, and I would never recommend doing it. It's not, that's not the issue. It's the issue of advertising that as a part of the deal.
Is there a mechanism within the council that these minimums can be approved by council prior to them being marketed and published and made available to the public?
I would, if I was, if I were you, I would not move forward without an ordinance from council setting out those numbers. If we're gonna put minimum bids on it, I wouldn't do it without that.
I think that's what his biggest concern is, and I have no problem with doing it with reserve. Maybe I'm braver, but I feel more confident that way. And the risk on my behalf is not getting paid. But the buyer's premium's only been out since the 70s, so that... But the buyer's premium's only been out since the seventies, so that's probably why it's not part of the old law. You know, and that wasn't in consideration how auctioneers got paid. You know, Sotheby's and Christie's came up with it during the decline of art sales and we've been using it in real estate for a long time now. But I have sold for Lakota schools, Mount Healthy schools, real estate, and it is a little bit different. And, and typically it's not distressed, you know, property in, in the sense that this portfolio is a little troubled. So I will stick by the reserve method. I think it's best suited for what you have. That way we can sit behind closed doors and examine what we came up with to see where we're at before we accept everything. But I also agree with your method as well, so whatever works for you.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I think you want as much transparency as possible and.
You can still have transparency. You can still have all of those amounts it's going to take to clear the property.
But once, you know, if the, the numbers have been crunched and, and everyone has done their homework and the service director has been brought up to speed and this is the approach and this is how we're handling it, again, if you've got a minimum bid of thirty-nine hundred dollars on a property because that's the tax you owe on it and it's worth fifteen, it's going to bring between eight and twelve thousand dollars, maybe seventeen if, if there are two people. You, you're going to have a very thin market here as well. You aren't going to have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people bidding on these properties. Many of them, you may only have two, the neighbor on each side of the property. And if they find out that they can own that lot and, and expand the size of their yard for thirty-six hundred dollars, that's one of these that are off your plate and it's gone and it has a new owner.
And let me just, the, the whole purpose of this idea that you have to do it by competitive bidding is so that the city maximizes, that's the, that was the, the default way of deciding what's actually a fair price. And I will tell you, if we owe fifteen thousand dollars on a piece of property and there's internet advertising and email blasts that go out and the part of this is the city has to advertise it five times in a paper of general circulation. That's just a requirement, not that anybody reads, reads illegal ads, but that's one of the requirements. We do all that and the best bid we get on a property we owe fifteen thousand dollars on is five thousand dollars. I don't know why we wouldn't take it anyway, to be honest with you, because that's five grand we're not going to have and we're not going to get more than that. Because what, it's just, that's my perspective on it, I just think, you know.
And that's why I'm against the minimum bid for that reason because they may not even bid because that's too high. And so you're telling them it takes this and so they don't even bother. Let it bid and see what happens. What the reserve is similar to absolute in that, you know, yes, we can be transparent, but we don't have to set a bar, you know? It brings what it brings and from that point you can make a decision. And we haven't set, you know, parameters where if somebody sees it's got to bring this and like, why even bother?
Well, I think back to the point that was made here. If you simply say it's a reserve, they're going to look on, on your county auditor's website. They're going to see that there's a fifteen thousand dollar tax bill. In their mind, it still has to bring fifteen thousand dollars. You're, you end up in the same place.
My analogy to the buyer is that when I have a reserve auction, sometimes the properties bring more and sometimes they bring less, but more often than not, the seller will take the number if it's close enough. They have the ability. And so I sell that to the buyer when I speak with them because I try to qualify everybody possible. But I give them the advantages of bidding on, um, a reserve auction. You know, they have the ability to take less.
And I, and I agree with that. That approach works fantastic. If you have an estate, you've got three siblings, everybody thinks the house is worth two hundred thousand dollars. You don't put a minimum on it, you don't put a reserve on it and on auction day you're sitting at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And now you have a conversation with those three siblings and you find out that, gosh, having money in three weeks is a lot better than holding out for our two hundred thousand dollars. That i- is a situation where that approach, in my mind, works great. If these properties were in Indian Hill, in Centerville, in any, you know, name any other municipality that has a much higher school tax than Norwood does and, and you're talking about different approaches. But we're talking about these assets in Norwood, Ohio that right now have a bill to the city of Norwood.
So with this approach, like, if we did the reserve approach, uh, could we put on there that, like, some kind of a thing that just says like, these properties are reserved because of Ohio Revised Code kind of stipulations, uh, you know, please, we're entertaining all, you know, offers. I mean, is, is that something that could be kind of put on there to explain? Or do we still, even doing that, do we still lose the, do you think that we would still lose the interest? Just because it has the, the yellow reserve marker on it?
I don't think so because, um, I, I sold a batch plant in Middletown and it's like a water processing treatment plant. And we auctioned all of the assets off individually. And we told everyone as they walked through the plant that we're going to sell everything individually and they were going to sell everything in its entirety. And whichever way it brings the most money is how we're going to sell it. And it turned out that it brought the most money as its entirety. And we didn't know if we were going to have somebody come up and be able to cut a check for that bet. A water treatment plant is not an easy thing to sell. But we thought, let's piecemeal it first and see where we're at. And, and that's done a lot of times in foreclosure cases of different assets. So we had the real estate involved and we had the personal property. We didn't know which one at that time was worth more money. So, you know, people hung with us and they still bid. And that's used over and over again. That's why I have the belief that I do, that the reserve will work based on now knowing really where you're at with the liens, where I think the values are and where we could drive the most dollars and still be transparent. I'm definitely not secretive. I believe in telling everything possible, but at the same time giving people possibilities because you have a decision to make and you need to see the whole portfolio before you can make that decision.
So if you have that fifteen thousand dollar tax bill and you have a five thousand dollar bid, are you going to be able within twenty-four to forty-eight hours to get approval to accept that five thousand dollar offer?
You have to ask the chairman of the finance committee, but there's ways to, there's ways to make that. It won't happen this month, but there, I think there are ways to figure that out. It's going to be a little more complicated than, okay, we're authorizing it, let's start on Friday. But, um, you know, I think, I think there's ways to accommodate that within the, the broader structure that we have here. Maybe a question, let's do the bigger ones first.
See what you got.
Different days and then, you know, later on, we'll probably have to sit down with the, um, state auditors, their team and the city auditor to figure out exactly how we're going to structure all this. I mean, the other side's, I don't think we've got anywhere in the budget right now to write the twenty-five or thirty-five hundred dollar advertising check either, so. You know, this is, at this point, and I, let me just be upfront, I didn't know if anybody would be interested in doing this for the city and it's a bunch of slivers, you know, a bunch of empty slivers that are kind of what a big chunk of these are. So I appreciate you putting in the, you know, putting together the proposals and, and letting us know that there's alternatives. So I definitely appreciate that for us right now. I think it's, we're still trying to wrap our heads around what's the best way and how is this all going to work?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to hear from Councilmember Clark.
Um, just a couple of questions. Penny, you mentioned you do open houses for, you would do open houses for some of the properties. Would you consider that as well?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay. And then you kind of discussed your marketing plan. Could you do a little similar discussion?
It was outlined in my original proposal. It's basically, yeah, it's basically a three-tiered process, print media, um, internet signage. There would be a, an individual sign on every property. Basically, the same stuff that, that is, you'll see in my proposal, it's outlined very similarly. Oddly enough, we don't spend nearly as much in newsprint media as we used to, if you can imagine that. But we did have in our budget, um, some presence in the Cincinnati Enquirer and some presence in, presence in your Norwood Star. I think when James and I spoke, one of the best pieces of advertising you're going to have is when we send you link for the auction and it goes on your city website that, where people are plugged into. That's going to be very effective. Again, we, we do belong to the MyStateMLS, so, which spiders out to about thirty-five other websites. Most importantly, Realtor.com, which is where consumers are looking for properties, not necessarily Realtors. Uh, I don't find that Realtors, we do, we do as well cooperate with, with Realtors if they properly register their bidders ahead of time. But it's not very often on assets like these that Realtors are out there working for buyers and finding them these assets and, and representing them. But the consumer is, and that's where Realtor.com comes into play. And by virtue of that MLS placement, it does hit Realtor.com, Trulia, Zillow, all of those places where people are looking for real estate.
Great. You might be able to blackout some space, yeah. And then just one more question, kind of, you kind of hit on it, but can you talk about the, the process for pre-qualifying a bidder or having them fill out an application, kind of what you guys go through with that?
Well, with the online bidding, it is fairly opaque. I mean, they give us their contact information and they're allowed to start bidding. However, once it gets closer, um, we're going to communicate, we're going to reach out to those bidders and make sure that they're real human beings, um, and we have had no problems. They have twenty-four hours to wire transfer their non-refundable deposit into our trust account. If they have not done that, we go to the backup bidder. But I can tell you, since the last three years we've been doing online auctions, we have not had an issue with a single buyer. If people take the time and the effort and the energy to participate, they're really buyers.
So I've been doing online auctions since they were invented. I used to bid call into my cellphone. But we do ping their credit card and we match that because of fraud and just, you know, cat jumped on my computer keys and all these things. We get their IP address, we capture that. I also look, I recently sold a piece of property for Lebanon Citizens National Bank and it was a bank up in Clarksburg, Ohio. You drive right through it, blink your eyes. And I worked really cheap on that deal because I didn't think it would bring so much. It brought sixty thousand dollars and the high bidder was from Kansas. So I'm perusing the bidder list to see, wow, there's a lot of people bidding on this. I can't believe this. It's a bank, it's the nicest building in the whole town and people wanted to put a food bank in it. So I picked up the phone and called the bidder because he's in Kansas. And I said, did you by chance participate in any of my FDIC auctions? Because obviously I've done auctions all over. He said, actually, I was on the board of the bank and, because I had Googled him and found out he owns strip malls and he obviously had a lot of money. But I'll go to that extent of even qualifying to make sure that, you know, we're not going to end up with somebody that's not going to stick with the deal. But we do hit their credit card for up to a hundred, a hundred dollars just to make sure that the information they've entered on the credit card matches their profile. So we don't have some bizarre person not understanding the rules and how things work. And then from there, they're given a bid number that they can bid with.
Okay, great. Thank you both.
No problem.
So at this point, uh, do we have an idea, I mean, Keith, do we, are, are we even able to do, have we determined that, are we able to do if we did the minimum bid one for some of those properties? Would that even be allowed under this? Like, so after the minimum bid is fulfilled, then it's, uh, it goes forward as, you know, almost as an absolute, if that makes sense? Or do we have to do the reserve, do we have to do a reserve just for the fact that? Or do we still have to do more research on that?
We, we absolutely cannot guarantee that the sale goes through. It's, that's like the clearest sentence in the entire Ohio Revised Code. The officer with control of the property has the right to not accept, can decide not to accept a bid. The highest bid, highest best, whatever the language, you know, is the absolute right not to, doesn't have to accept it.
Okay.
And that's just where we are.
So it sounds like no matter what, if you're in agreement, but that we would need to do the reserve auction type of auction? Is that, would you kind of agree with that?
For the most part, but may I ask, is there anything in the Revised Code that would tell us that we cannot sell these properties that we own as a municipality for less than what the tax liens are on them?
We have to sell them at competitive, well, okay, through the traditional price. We have to sell them through competitive bidding, um, to the highest bidder. Whether or not you owe anything on it or you're taking a loss on it, there's nothing in the code about that.
Okay, which is not saying that all obligations must be fulfilled in order as the.
Our obligation, legally, our obligation should already be fulfilled. That's a whole separate conversation, but it hasn't been. So we're already out of compliance with that.
One sentence that is used in the foreclosure world that could offset your concerns because I, I truly believe that you just want to put the numbers out there and tell, be, be very clear with the buying public. When I sell a property at, at foreclosure sale, it's minimum bid of fifty thousand dollars, subject to court confirmation. Now, in doing foreclosures for over ten years, I've never had a judge or a court not confirm one. So people bid comfortably in that setting, knowing that it's very unlikely that it would not be confirmed. So if.
And that would, that would be exactly the situation because you can't guarantee it unless the judge, unless it's confirmed by the court. So that's exactly the same situation, exactly that kind of language, yes.
But we would, what you would want to do is have a very limited and defined timeframe that that confirmation, in which that confirmation would occur.
That, I'm thinking.
We can figure that out, yeah.
Make sure Judge is not in the case.
Okay, how, do we, do you all have a suggestion on kind of how we move forward from here? Do we want to have time to kind of review, like, and you all get the full presentations? Because of course Penny wasn't able to give that and we meet together. Do you have?
Oh, I, a couple of things. One, if, if we did, if we, it sounds like we have to do somewhat of a reserve type deal. But I don't know that as part of the reserve, I don't know that we would want to necessarily put the minimum bid on there or not. I mean, just, you know, with all the information out there, you know, they're going to see it. And if it's reserved, they may or may not bid on it based on what the tax liabilities are or maybe they just, you know, if, if we're not putting a minimum on it, they may just. But on the other hand, with the reserve, being it's not an online auction with reserve.
It's online, I do everything online.
I know, but I guess my point is this, if, if I did an online auction and I sent in my reserve bid, that's it, five dollars, I don't see what anybody else is bidding to come back.
You see all the bids. My site's completely transparent.
But I, I thought on the reserve that they would come in and then the safety director opens them up and said, this one is the one.
You're, you're confusing the, the term sealed bid with reserve auction.
Well, now I'm kind of got them both, kind of working together here.
Same as absolute or reserve. The difference is with absolute, whatever the high bid is, you, you have to take it. But when they're bidding on the site, the bidding is the bidding. The difference is when, when the bidding is over, whatever the high bid is, is given to you and you have the timeframe, twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours to accept, reject.
So all the, all the bids online would just.
Be subject to approval.
The same exposure as, as an absolute auction, except for the fact that.
It's still timed online auction.
What you see is what the current bid is. You can click on a button and it will show you bid history. So it may have started at five dollars and, and gone up to wherever it is now and you will see what the next required incremental bid would be. If you would like to place that bid, you can. You can also place a maximum bid and allow the system to bid on your behalf up to your maximum bid. So it, online auctions have become more like real auctions in the last five years than they, than e- everybody has eBay in mind as online auction. eBay is not an online auction. eBay is an online marketplace and the last fastest bidder who, the last, the lucky last bidder is the one who gets it, not necessarily the person who's willing to give the most money. Because both Penny and our sites have what's called a dynamic closing. If a bid comes in in the last five minutes before an item is scheduled to end, it will extend a period of time. If a bid comes in in that period of time, it will extend a period of time until there is no bidding activity for that required period of time.
Which emulates a live, and we're live auctioneers who like the software because if we're standing here at the podium, we're not going to drop the hammer if people are still bidding. So the software does that. If somebody comes in at the last minute, then it keeps extending the bidding. And so it emulates a live auction in that respect because a lot of the fury will happen in the last five minutes. A lot of people won't show their cards until the end.
We had a land auction about a month ago, uh, over outside of Columbus, uh, minimum bid of three hundred thousand dollars. About a half an hour before the auction was scheduled to end, someone placed that minimum bid and it was, the end time came, two and a half hours later, the property sold for eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, totally.
That many extensions.
Yeah, it can quadruple, whatever. So it does emulate a live auction in that respect. I like the idea of running it on my site for thirty days because I like to use search engine optimization, get as many people attracted to the site, get them familiar with the site and get them bidding. No matter what that first number might be, it's going to change. You know, it's, you know, I like to have exposure for as long as possible.
So the online auction would run for a period like up to thirty days or something?
I like thirty days for real estate.
Or whatever we would determine, I guess.
We generally like to place the properties on our website for about a two-week period of time and then have a specified opening time and then about three-week period, a bidding period.
And mine is open for thirty days. And mine is open for 30 days.
Does that answer your questions about the reserve versus sealed bid or...
For me, with sealed bid, I just didn't know that they would be exposed, all the, everything's exposed online, everybody's bidding, what's going on, so.
You could be sitting in Vegas bidding on real estate in Norwood.
You can.
I bought a boat sitting in a parking lot of Montgomery Recycler. It was a midlife crisis moment and the boat was in Michigan. It was brand new. It was my first online major purchase.
I bought a red bloodhound out of Missouri, sitting in my pajamas at home.
My dad sold a plane on eBay. An airplane, an actual, four-seater airplane.
They are major assets, major assets. I mean, all of the stuff that I've sold for the FDIC in 2007, 2008, we were going through the contract. And I showed up in Dallas and I, I got really nervous. I saw all these men in cowboy hats and big belts and I actually broke out and bid call in the conference room. But I'm convincing them that if they're going to be doing all these assets, and imagine, you know, this is almost 10 years ago, if they're going to go in and seize all these banks all over the country and they have to sell quick, they, they can't do it live because we, we need to move. So I proved to them that I could sell fast, but at the same time, that online auctions work. And it was the best way that we, I mean, we would be in Wall Street, we would be in Puerto Rico on a remote part of the island. And I was told Puerto Ricans won't, won't bid online by a Puerto Rican auctioneer. I'd hired him to do live auctions for me for the FDIC, but he wasn't bringing good prices. And so I did the first online auction there and I said, well, if you're on an island and you don't have a computer, how, how do you get things here? So I started thinking, well, sure, they have computers and if they don't, they can't afford to buy these assets anyways. So they really do work. And convincing them to do that, they sell all their real estate this way now. You know, I don't get it, but that's how they do it.
So Keith, or I introduced you.
I was going to say, so I know you guys are both auctioneers, this is your business. So you think, in your, both of your opinion, you think this is the best way for us to get the most amount of money for all these properties is to do like an auction?
Accelerated bidding paired with aggressive marketing.
Yeah.
So Keith, going from here, now that we know that, now that we, I think, do we have a general consensus that we're willing to auction off these properties? I mean, we need to talk about, you know, the specific ones, but...
I think if we're going to get rid of them, we probably would go that route. But I do think that we would have to discuss it with the other members of council, for them to have their input as well and for us to explain to them what, what we're looking to do and what the advantage would be to doing that. And I guess we would then have to set a, you know, a timeframe and then also, as you guys were saying, that they have to actually review each piece. If, I'd be a little leery of having open houses, I don't know who would hold the liability if somebody falls through the floor.
We'd make that inspection. I've done some scary crack houses around this town. Open the door and tell them, you know, to, you know, bring their flashlight and take a risk. I've sold houses with syringes out front. I don't go in them. I have my staff maybe unlock the door. But if it were a hazard in that respect, we would have inspected it to say it's fit for open house or not. Because we don't want anyone to have that kind of liability. Or if there's a vagrant inside, you know, you never know.
There, the three, somebody went through them recently, the, who was interested in buying them, the three houses and they're still, they went through them, Public Works opened them up and they went in and looked around. He, he's still interested, so they can't be that bad.
Right, right.
So, you know, it, it's doable, we just got to coordinate the time.
I've gotten some good money for houses that didn't even have doors and all the copper was gone and those Frish's houses, they were some scary houses. I was pleasantly shocked.
Well, just to, procedurally, we're going to have to have an ordinance that declares whichever parcel's surplus property that we want to sell. And then we will go forward with, you know, an ordinance approving a contract with an auction house, if we go that way. And that would have, we could include, you know, just incorporate whatever those terms are in that, in that course. But yeah, a committee, the whole meeting to actually go through and, and we need to get the administration just to make sure I got the list because I'm not 100% accurate on my list. It's kind of my working list. And I know that, I mean, some, the larger list I have has parcels that the city doesn't want to sell. But I don't think that those were on. I'm pretty sure I took those off the ones I sent to you guys.
And I removed anything that wasn't on Tim Lyles' presentation, I removed from the spreadsheet before printing it, so.
Yeah, so I've got, yeah, I've got three or four or five different working spreadsheets with, that are kind of overlap, for the most part overlap. But it's, it's, I don't remember all the details, but I know the first step is declaring the property surplus and we want to get rid of it. And then at the very least, an ordinance authorizing the contract, there'd be one to authorize the sale. There may have to be an individual ordinance at the end of the process before the closing that would authorize the closing contract for, one for each individual parcel. I wouldn't be surprised, because it's kind of like the way municipal paperwork works. So, I mean, there are a number of steps.
The title company would be able to assist in what that requirement would be too, because they're going to have to have a comfort level to be able to underwrite title insurance. So that would be a conversation you want to have with them.
There's just a number of steps that need to go forward on that kind of thing. And so, that would go before council. It's not like this stuff can just jump right out, so. Though I think the next, the next step is the ordinance declaring the property surplus and unnecessary, so.
Excellent. So it sounds like they're done with us. They have a lot of work to do.
That's right.
Yes.
I would add that I would pick one title company and insist, you know, in contract that the successful bidder would have to close at that title company. That way they're familiar with what your process is going to be and close them all at the same place. It becomes systematic and there's no headaches there.
I always use the same title company and they would send a closer here. Yeah, one day, schedule them all, let them pick time slots.
So, yeah, I think that, do you have any more questions for? Okay, cool. I thank you all very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
I will be in contact with you via email.
Thanks.
So, okay, so for these properties...
Good luck with your...
Thank you.
So do we want to take some time to talk about that tonight then, about which person that you want to use?
I don't really, I want to talk about it right now. I mean...
Oh, I mean, I think they're going to be, well, I hear you. Do you...
I mean, I don't recall seeing her proposal. I thought it was in this packet, but it wasn't. But I, I don't, I guess that's what we'd have to compare, but I guess the, the, I don't know how much difference there is from one or the other, so I don't know how we would compare unless we look at the, you know, the bottom line, what, okay, their fees are this, their, these fees are this. If they're both pretty comparable, you know, you might flip a coin, but I don't...
Did anyone stick out to you? I mean, it'll just say that all of this, a lot of this is pretty comparable, like the marketing plan, I mean, they were, that's very, you know, Facebook, they have their own email list, they have other, goes on the MLS. But, so if those all are equal, did you have any...
The only thing I was thinking of, I mean, depending on which kind of process we decide to go through, whether it be like the reserve or the minimum bid or what we're allowed to do. I know she was favoring the reserve and he was favoring the minimum bid, so I don't know if that would make a difference. But I agree, they're, they're pretty similar, I think, in their processes.
Yeah, I think the reserve is going to be the safest for all of us because, you know, if you put reserve on there, we, we have the right to not accept a bid and that's what we need to have the right to do, even if we probably are going to, I mean, very likely going to accept the highest bid or whatever, whatever the highest bid ended up being, so. Yeah, she definitely seems a lot more comfortable with the reserve. And he did. Keith?
I would just say, there's no rea, you don't have to make a decision today because there's a number of things that have to happen before we get in there. Primarily, the one is, is, it just from, from the city's perspective is how we're going to work the finances as far as making sure that we can cover the liens that are existing on the property as a process. Does that mean, do you do, we're going to do the three biggest ones first and hopefully that'll bring in enough and then have the other ones after that and we should have enough in there? What do we need to coordinate with the, the state auditor? What do we need to coordinate within the appropriations, all that kind of thing? And, and so I don't think there's a real reason today to worry about exactly what. And probably the committee's going to come back again at some point in the next few weeks to kind of consider some of those things.
The other thing would be, I mean, are, are we looking to package these all at one auction date where, okay, the auction starts tomorrow for 30 days and these are all part of that auction? Or do we package, you know, do five of them at a time to see how it goes? And is it worth, or is it better off doing them all at one time? The other thing would be too, is say we, we do them all at one time and we say, okay, we, we come out ahead in the long run. But say, one, we, we owe, you know, $1,500 still. Do we have to present our case then to the, are we able to accept that offer without going to the, the review board and saying, hey, we're trying to unload this piece of property? We only got $3,500 at the auction and there's, you know, $5,100 due in taxes. But in the long run, the city needs to, to do something like this. Would the, the panel approve that deficit spending on there? Or would they say, well, then you got to come up with another plan? But if we had them all done at one time and we saw, well, we're going to make an extra five grand overall so we can justify our case to them, then I guess it'd have been easier to swallow. But I don't, with them only meeting once a month as well, do we have to have additional terms in here when we write the contract that, you know, instead of being able to close in 30 days, we may not be able to close in 30 days if we don't have the approval of everybody, you know, the boards and that?
Right, and that's a question to sit down with Jim and Marcus and Anna Mary and say, okay, here's what we, here's our thinking is that over, in 2018, we're going to generate at least $150,000 of revenue. To do that, we're going to, but, but at the same time, we're going to be paying $150,000 in property tax as far as what's in the fiscal plan, plus an additional $3,000 for advertising and, because we're going to, you know, in addition to advertising, they're advertising budgets, we're going to have to advertise ourselves five times, we're going to have to advertise the ordinances, I mean, just that kind of thing. Like, to do that and incorporate that into the larger plan, and then how do we incorporate into appropriations to make sure we're covered for next year if we have to write $80,000 worth of checks from the city's fiscal reserves because the money's not going to come in at the right way or the, I mean, that's the kind of thing to sit down and work through how exactly that process works. It's like, I think it's relatively easy to incorporate into the financial plan that we're, we are, part of our plan is to generate $200,000 of revenue by auctioning off property. Part of our plan, part of our expenses next year is going to be $150,000 in property tax, only going property tax payments. And so that's what we want to add that to the plan. What do we need to do? Do that. But then we also have to figure out incorporating, and to be honest, I don't know where the, like, the, the, the advertising, the $2,500 or $3,500 check for advertising, we're going to have to write, or the payments we're going to have to make for the advertising budget. I'm not sure what key that comes out of, you know? Even that kind of thing. Public lands and buildings, I really have no idea. I would guess public lands and buildings.
Okay, so while we get kind of some of these questions answered...
Yeah, I mean, that's the first, then the next step, I mean, to take a step back, the big question is, is online auction the way to go versus the sealed bid, you know, salt contract way to approach versus, there are some, that there are individuals that are interested in buying them, do we try to negotiate a price that would take care of some of the parcels, but not all of them? I think this seems to me to be the best option, but that's, that's the number one decision. And I just want to make it clear that that's a decision that has to be made. Sometimes it gets, you know, these are the people here we're talking to, so you kind of forget about, oh yeah, there's these other options as well. There's complications with those. And so this, in my opinion, this seems like the best alternative. You know, at the very least, just, just for the advertising and getting the word out to people that might be interested.
Hmm, I, I think they would, they would reach more people than we ever would by, you know, doing something on our own. But now, say, Joe Blow comes in and says, hey, you got a piece of property over here, you know, are you guys interested in selling it? Are we allowed to entertain that or would we have to do the same thing? You know, okay, he comes in and says, hey, I'll pay all the back taxes plus I'll give you $5,000 for it. Are we allowed to do that without competitive bidding? Or if it's under 20 grand, are we allowed to, or, I don't know?
Here's, here's the answer, I know where you're getting at. The answer is if there, if there are properties that we got that were just donated to us and there's a few of those, we had, the property was demolished and they just signed it over to the city, we have to sell it through competitive bidding. If there are ones we got through the tax foreclosure process, those we can sell under any conditions we want, to anybody we want, provided we get at least fair market value. And that's the hard part, is figuring out fair market value. Because we've got the estimates, but I'm not sure how reliable those are. I think those were just done in a very basic way and just right off the bat, the ones that are for, that have houses on them, they're valued just as though they're vacant land. It's just the assumption that those buildings are not worth anything. So, but yes, we can. But my concern with that is, and there are, we do have offers, we have had offers, we certainly had a number, and we've had a couple of specific offers and we've had a number of, I want to get this, how much do you want for it? I have no idea if that's the best, if that's what the property's worth or not, you know? And so that would be the other thing. That for me is the other side of this, is that this way we know, this is how we're going to get the highest offer. We're going to get, this is the, this is kind of the definition of it. The only question is, are we going to get enough to offset the 10% broker's fee and the 25, plus the $2,500 in advertising? That's, that for me is the only question. I think probably so. But I mean, we do have offers for a few. The question is who decides whether that's enough and whether there's other people that might, because if one person's interested, others might be.
And Keith does, and I apologize for not bringing that up earlier, but yes, I've got, he sent me all the emails of where, he has of where people have offered property. And so I'll go ahead and make sure, after the meeting, forward all those to you just so you can see. But like, I think the Kinnell Worth one, was the guy offering like $30,000 to, for that lot, or is that what?
There's, yeah, there's, there's a number, there's some that are, specific businesses want to get specific parcel or have in the past. I don't know how serious they are about it anymore. There's a couple of people interested in the two houses and in the other vacant lots. There's somebody that wants to get something for some urban agriculture. And there's a few others, I think maybe, but the, the county, the land bank posted these online, accepting applications, the way they do with their property. So we, a couple, a few months ago, he, you know, I'm getting these out of the, the land bank, I'm getting applications for these, do you want them? Because the way the land bank does it is you submit an application and they decide, are you worthy to sell the property to? Do you have a good plan for that? And so people submitted those thinking that that was how they got them and I'm, I have to say, no, we haven't decided we're going to sell them or for how much or how yet, so. And I got tired of those, so I, I gave it all to James.
Yes, he did. So I, I'll make sure I get those to you. There, so the thing is though, if we do, like, you know, look at this, you know, let's just say we do want to sell the Kinnell Worth property to the person that wants to do that, we'll, we'll still have to pay the $2,500 marketing bill or whatever, we'll still have to market the rest, like, the whole rest of it. And I know that we talked about the one, you know, doing one versus do, you know, one time, like, on one day, we'll close all the, not close, but we'll offer all the properties as the closing, the time for the bidding that day. You know, I personally think that's preferable versus like the packs of five, just because they're going to be adverti, you know, you're going to get the most interest on, on that when there's the most amount of things happening at the same time.
Especially when there's, when you're talking about 11 empty lots, you might as well market them all together. You know, there's no reason to break those up that I can see.
Yeah, and I mean, I just don't, yeah, I don't know if we would want to pay for that, even if, let's just say, the other houses and stuff, if we, you know, wanted to see how it goes. I think just with the reserve bidding, if we, you know, if we throw them all out there at the same time and let people bid on, and there's certain ones that, you know, we'll talk about it beforehand, but there's certain ones that we're like, you know, we, that's just, that's not enough, you know, the city just can't get rid of it for that. We can just recommend to the, or the safety service director and the mayor, you know, talk, we can just recommend that we don't, it's not accepted and then just, we keep it in our, in our possession, you know, if, if it's decided that's the best way... in our possession, you know, if it's decided that's the best way, you know, it sounds like we really need to get them out of our hands, but they at least help alleviate that concern. We could always do another auction with them if we decide that we're not getting enough at that point.
I like that you can counter too with the reserve, too, you know, it's like, they're close to where we want to be.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely, yeah, I personally think that we are, the net value of these, we're going, definitely going to get more than that tax bill, because some of these are, the tax bill's very small compared to, you know, what I think will, I'm not an expert, but likely go for some of this. Others though, the tax bill is probably higher than, you know, what we'll get out of some of these vacant lots, so, especially the ones that we've owned since like 2011. So, from here then, Keith, do, what would be your recommendation? Are, like, how do we move forward here? Should we schedule another committee of this? Should we just schedule a committee of the whole to?
You could do a committee of the whole. I would also recommend that you or the committee sit down with the safety service director and/or mayor and probably Jerry Stoker or Mark Reeves, just to, let's get the list of the ones, let's make sure. Because there was one that I had an offer, or somebody wanted to buy, it was End Elm here, the empty lot there. And, "Oh, that makes sense, the building next door, and that makes sense," and talked to Joe, said, "No, we don't want to sell that because we're, we want to keep that in order to potentially realign that intersection." I'm like, "Oh, yeah." So, you want to check with everybody and see, is there a reason to keep that one? Is there a reason to keep that, that we don't want to sell that one, so.
Interesting, okay.
So, just make sure we all have this, everybody's working from the same list, we're absolutely 100% guaranteed on that. And at that time too, is probably a time to sit down with the administration and figure out, "Okay, here's the tax thing, here's, do we want, if there are reserve prices, what kinds of prices do we want to maybe look at?" And you can do that in a committee, you don't necessarily need to do it on camera, but that's something to do in, you know, either with the committee or with, you know, the chairman and maybe the, you know, some of the people from the administration.
Okay. Awesome, so, I will take, you know, that into advisement. And, well, I mean, do you all have an opinion there? Would you rather have like a, just a, would you rather have a committee meeting where we have, you know, try to have Mark Reeves and Joe Gears and/or Jerry Stoker there to talk about all of this? Would you be okay delegating that if?
I don't know, I would have to have multiple meetings, but I think if everybody has one list and everybody knows, "Yep, this is, this, these are the ones we're going to put up for auction, or these are ones we agree we're going to sell," then we just give it to everybody else and explain the process, you know, and something on that line there, but, because everybody's, they're going to come in and tell us the same thing, you know, that, "Well, we acquired this back then and this is the reason we got it." We know we got them, it's just a matter, do we know what we're going to do with them? You know, do we have to hold this for like, street realignment? Or do we have to hold this for a potential pocket park? Or, you know, if there's no reason to hold them, put them all in that basket, you know, and, you know, get rid of them. And then we just have to figure out how we're going to get rid, you know, what, where we're going with that. But that was, you know, if I auction them off and.
So, how do we want to decide? I mean, between the two, I mean, basically just reviewing the presentations, do we want to, do we need to come back together to give it, so that we can give a recommendation to the rest of council? Or, if we did choose, if, you know, auction's the way we go, between those two?
I think once we get the full list of properties, make sure everyone's on the same page, maybe a committee of the whole meeting to kind of talk through and maybe we can send out the presentations to the rest of council and then if they have questions, we can try to help them answer those at that time and then we can, maybe at that meeting, decide what direction we want to go.
Much of boils down to the cost, I don't, I don't see much difference between one or the other.
I think they're very similar, I think you may want to consider the, and I would just say this, my impression was Mr. Lyle was very definite, "This is the way you want to go." He's got very strong opinions about, "This is the way it's supposed to do." And Ms. Worley is, was, "Well, there's this and there's this and there's this," is different, you know, seems a little more, is, you know, has done, is kind of a more broad possible approach and it just depends on which one of those approaches you're more comfortable with. Certainly when I'm, like, I'm a car mechanic, I want them to know, "No, this is the thing you need to do and this is why." I want them to be very, very sure about that and, you know, I need that kind of guidance for that kind of thing, but there's other things where you may not. So, I mean, that to me was kind of the biggest difference, I think, between the two. I mean, I couldn't tell you whether the, you know, two weeks online so that people can see it and then the actual auction is three weeks is better than it's just up for 30 days as an au, I don't know if that's better, I don't know if their contact lists are better, I don't know if, you know, the title companies are better, I don't know, you know, any of that stuff, just really kind of, you know, I think that's, that's kind of tough. So, it's kind of the terms of it and then it's the, here's what is the best and versus, you know, flexibility, whatever makes you more comfortable. I think those, you know, for me, those are the only, those are the main differences I saw, so. But I don't get to decide.
Well, your opinion definitely matters here. Yeah, I def, I liked, I think I liked Penny's at least, she was the most comfortable with the way that sounds like we have to, we're going to have to go, I mean, I still want to review these presentations and again, and, well, I'll get a digital copy out to you all. But at least I'm happy that she is, at least, well, you know, seems pretty comfortable with that, as her business model. I mean, I don't, I think if we would have said that we want to do minimum bid and that's, you know, that's it, we want to have the minimum bid on there, I think she probably would have, I don't, that's not her business model, I mean, her business, I don't think that she would have been as willing to do that, because she said, every, one of her things starts at a dollar, you know, I don't remember her saying that at one point, so. Anyways, at least she's, it sounds like she's more comfortable with what we want to do, with what we legally can do. So, you know, I'll work on getting the properties confirmed, you know, by Joe Gears, Jerry Stoker, Mark Reeves. I will talk with Donna about getting a committee of the whole meeting set up, so I guess target probably that second week of December. Would that give us enough time, do you think, to get?
You have as much time as you need. There's no deadline on any of this.
I know there's no, there's no deadline, but the, I mean, $30,000 every six months, that's just.
I don't know what that, I don't know what that number is, but we're not going to sell them before those bills become due anyway. That's not going to happen.
Right, but if that, so, if, you know, if it is $30,000 every six months, let's just say that, you know, that's $5,000 a month kind of it's accruing, is that, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, so basically, I just want to, you know, I think it's good that we get it done, but if two, if you don't think two weeks is enough time to get the rest of council to go there.
Depends on what you need, it depends on what you want to accomplish there. I'm just saying it's not, this is not a rush to the finish line, it's, I know Mr. Lyle's thing said, "Okay, and we'll start on December 1st," and like, that's not, it's just not going to happen. You can, certainly you can have one in two weeks and that's fine, I would, by that meeting, have, "Here's a list of properties, here's kind of what we're thinking, at least if we're going to do minimums or at least targets for each one of these, whether that's based on, you know, the property tax that's due or, you know, the estimate of what we might get for it or whatever that is." That's, you know, certainly, I would at least have those thing, two things together and then maybe talk to committee of the whole if you wanted to do that.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll, we'll work on that offline and then I'll let you all know kind of what we decide there, but we'll get a committee of the whole meeting scheduled at some point to present this to the rest of the council members and try to answer any of their questions and move forward, so. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay, so, excellent. Well, I guess if there's nothing else, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.